Okay, welcome, everybody. Meetings called to order here at like 5:34. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood. Commissioner Wendy Newland. Commissioner Michael Lowry. Alternate Commissioner Renzo Bianchi. Alternate Commissioner Janelle Mines.
Here.
Thank you. You've probably heard the voice out of the heavens. Marty Jost is traveling. We don't usually accommodate remote, but Marty's done a lot of work on at least one of the agenda items, thinking we would be able to meet on the 18th, and we didn't with him traveling. We invited him to participate, although he will not vote on any of the issues tonight. Commissioners, I don't have any, does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? Very good. Janelle, you will vote, obviously, in the absence of like three commissioners. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody that wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. Has anybody signed up, Lindsay or otherwise, even if you didn't sign up, wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda?
We have a Natalie Rothman that would like to speak.
All right, very good. Then we'll close the general public comment. The consent agenda consists solely of the approval of the October 7, 2025 meeting minutes. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes? None. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded to only to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved on a four zero vote. Commissioners, you see, we've added updates as we talked about at a previous meeting in the interest of keeping everybody informed about things. Staff, I really appreciate you accommodating this. There's two other items that were on this list. They both somewhat deal with the landings, and those have been incorporated actually in the discussion, in terms of one of them. We'll cover that as we have before. And then the last, the other one is added as item 9A, and that also deals somewhat tangentially, at least with the landings, but we've moved that to the end. So my, I believe I mentioned to you when we talked about adding this section, and I talked to the staff about it, the idea would be just very brief update, obviously, on these things, things that have gone through us and then gone to council, or other matters that have been before us that we want to keep on the front burner. What I would suggest is, and I put everything on the list this time, as I mentioned previously, most likely try to remember to poll each of you before meetings in time to get on the agenda, if there's anything else you want to have added. So what I would suggest is, I'll give a brief update, ask the staff where necessary, but we're not going to prolong the discussion. But if anybody feels that there's anything on the update list that we need further discussion on, we can do that during reports, so that we're not getting in the way necessarily holding up our primary business. Does that sound like acceptable, Commissioners? Okay. All right. So the Ladera, the first thing on our update, Ladera North Open Space update, I believe that probably you, Troy.
Yes.
Can you tell us, please?
Yes. Yeah, just real briefly, like you requested, just giving you a 30-second update, maybe. The, if you recall, with the preliminary plat, we had quite a bit of discussion about the amenities on the north open space, and they have submitted the final plat. It's gone through one round review. I think last week, we gave them their first round of comments. And we've been talking back and forth about the open space amenities. As of this Wednesday, I think the initial response was, it looks favorable that staff and the applicant are in agreement of what the amenities that will need to be in order for staff to recommend approval on, you know, the compliance, or, you know, that level of amenities. And so I think we're on track.
That's great. Thanks. Any questions on that? The council disposition on the land use code residential color amendment, as you recall, this was residential properties. We had the spirited discussion about colors and such, and variety and such. This, we recommended approval with, I think, and there may have been one, four to one, I can't recall the vote, but anyway, recommended approval. When it got to council, they had some questions about it. Troy, staff, is it safe to say they didn't necessarily oppose this? They were, they thought, we're talking about enforcement, really?
Right. I have my notes from council that night, and it was really, you know, how do you define what obnoxious colors are, who defines, and how, you know, and then enforcement was the other thing. How do you enforce this? And I think between those couple of issues, and then we had some of the zone districts with this language that would apply, but not all of them. And there was some discussion about, maybe we could come up with some language that they, that they would feel comfortable with, that would apply to all zone districts. And so they decided to pull, not, not vote for that language to be adopted. And so it's sort of either going to go away, or it would need some wordsmithing to come back if there was a desire to do that at some point.
Yeah, having been here, I would say, and sat in on that, I thought their concerns were, were spot on, certainly. And anyway, that happens sometimes, and that's why we're a recommending body. White Wing Preliminary Plat, Chad, probably best, this, we advanced the White Wing Preliminary Plat when it got to council. However, they continued it. They did not disapprove it. They continued it, but they had several issues. One was, and that's the reason we're considering land use code in some part tonight regarding gated communities. Scott, you want to take, what else? I know there's, you'll probably do a better job than me than the several issues that they had took exception to.
Yeah. So again, thanks for the recap. Generally, where we're at right now is because town council continued it indefinitely. They had some primarily concerns about connectivity to and from the site. The applicant has resubmitted and updated site plans, so staff is evaluating that right now. Also on the agenda is looking at a code amendment regarding gated communities. So just to be clear, because this is an application in process, if you and town council approves the gated community amendment, it wouldn't apply to a application in process. However, town council still at their discretion could add some reasonable conditions regarding that project. So it's a little bit confusing, because yes, there is a code amendment that we're bringing forward regarding some of those concerns raised, in particular to gated communities, but it doesn't apply to this case. So right now, what staff is doing is evaluating that resubmital. Once we get through this code amendment, we'll have some clarity about what the expectations are, and we can work with the petitioner on that moving forward. I would expect to hopefully have better clarity to schedule something early in 2026.
Am I correct? This will not, because it was continued, it won't come back through here?
It won't come back to you as a preliminary plat.
Okay. It'll come back as a final plat?
It would come back as a final, depending on what outcome is at town council, yeah.
All right. And when we get to the land use code amendment, dealing with the gated communities, we can, if we want to discuss further.
And it would not be specific to this, to the white wing case. It's just a land use code amendment, so.
Understood.
But again, looking at the submittal, they did address some of the concerns about some of the open space, the usability of the detention pond and connectivity issues. So where staff is still evaluating that.
Yeah, there were several, several issues that they had. You go back and watch. Nothing better to do, you can go back and watch that whole discussion that they had. So we'll, we're going to talk gated communities, but in a general sense, but if you have a further, I would suggest, if you have further questions about the white wing specifically, we can talk about that later on.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, and as I said, there's two other things that were by way of updates, but they're properly, I would say, incorporated within the, the public hearing issues. So, again, staff, appreciate you accommodating these updates. We move on, we have no item seven business. We move on to the public hearing business items, and the first one is item 8A, Timothanding Ninth, excuse me, Ninth Filing Final Plat. Chad?
Thank you, Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is for the Timothanding Filing Number Nine Final Plat. The applicant is PCS Group, and the owner is CAC Timoth LLC. I'll begin with a brief overview of the subject property. Filing nine covers portions of tracks A and B from the Timothanding finally filing number three, which was recorded in November of 2021. The overall property area is approximately 11 million square feet, or about 252 acres. And so just looking at this subject property map, you'll see to the north is unincorporated Laramie County, and portions of the connections to the white wing subdivision to the east. Harmony Club is directly east of this property. The Walker Manufacturing and other town properties outside of that to the south, and Timothanding subdivision, the remainder to the west. This application was in accordance with Table 2.1, our hearing process and notice requirements. The final plat application does require recommendation from you at Planning Commission tonight, and a final decision will occur from town council. You as planning commission shall recommend to town council either approval, approval with conditions, or denial per the Timothland Use Code. The property, the site was properly noticed with physical postings, Coloradoan notice, and a hearing sign within the property itself. So briefly, the zoning of the property, as we have touched on in the past, is zoned R2, R3, and CMU with an approved PD overlay, which matches the comprehensive plan designation of medium density residential. Just quickly to highlight the final plat review criteria, there are three criteria of which you will be reviewing this application against. One, that it conforms with the approved preliminary plat, and incorporates any of the required changes, modifications, or conditions with the approval of that preliminary plat. Two, that the development will substantially comply with the code, and that third, and lastly, all applicable technical standards have been met with the submittal. So this filing represents the first phase of subdivision for the remaining undeveloped portions of those tracks, as I mentioned, A and B, from the third filing. The applicant is proposing to create 340 single-family residential lots. In addition to the residential lots, the plat includes tracks dedicated for open space, utilities, and drainage. There is also a tract roughly 80 acres in size that is designated for future development, and would be platted in a later phase, consistent with the previously approved preliminary plat amendment for the Timothanding subdivision. The proposed gross residential density is approximately 1.96 dwelling units per acre, with the area of development being reviewed tonight. This is within the allowable range for the R2 and R3 zone districts, which permit up to four and eight dwelling units per acre, Regarding the open space, the plat is providing roughly 36 acres of functional open space, exceeding the town's open space requirements for single-family subdivisions. Their requirement is 20%. This is coming in roughly at 27%. The open space network includes a neighborhood park and three pocket parks, all designed to serve the residential lots within a quarter mile. The plat also establishes a connected system of neighborhood trails and a regional trail connection, consistent with the town's parks, recreation, open space, and trails plan, or otherwise known as post. The open space areas include a variety of amenities to support both active and passive uses. These amenities include shade shelters, play structures for multiple age groups. There's proposed learning and sensory panels within the parks, active turf areas, a connection of both hard and soft surface trails throughout, and additional features including climbing structures, swings, a permanent cornhole and bocce facility, seating benches, picnic tables, and a designated dog park. The park also incorporates native plantings and seed mixes to support long-term sustainability. These were included in the detailed sheet within the landscape plan for review. These are suggested amenities. If they are not available during the time of construction, something similar would be reviewed in place of those items. What you're seeing on the screen here in red shows the connectivity to the surrounding properties and the existing Timothanding subdivision currently. Up at Timoth Parkway, where Burntwood Street crosses, there will be a new connection into the subdivision, acting as the main point of egress-ingress for the northern portion of the site. There will also be a connection and continuation of Burntwood Street from the south to the existing Timothanding subdivision, as well as Pinedale Boulevard, which crosses the lakes to the south. Represented in green shows the open space areas and parks being proposed within the development. As you recall, they did propose a linear park design to flow east-west within the site. This captures a neighborhood park, the dog park, and two pocket parks within that. There is also a pocket park to the southeast of the subdivision, where the eventual connection to Grand Tree Boulevard may occur. The lines in purple represent the internal neighborhood connections and trails within the development. The yellow represent connections into the lakes themselves from this platted area, and the orange to the east or the right of the screen represents that connection of the regional trail eventually to connect to the Timoth reservoir. It's important to note that while it's not required to adhere to the enacted Senate bill that we will be talking about later in our code updates, which regulates certain landscaping practices for non-functional turf, artificial turf, and invasive plant, invasive plant species, this plan does adhere to those standards outside of the request or requirement for providing drought tolerant, tolerant alternatives to turf grass within the tree lawn area. So right now, with this proposal, it is representing a turf grass within the tree lawn. Again, this is being approved prior to 2026, which is when that requirement would go into effect. All subsequent filings, though, would be required to adhere to that requirement. Filing number nine is consistent with the approved Timothanding Sketch Plan Amendment, which allows for up to 764 single-family dwelling units within the plat boundary. Any additional dwellings proposed within future phases will be reviewed in accordance with the provisions of that adopted sketch plan resolution. The plat also implements the circulation network, trail connections, and open space framework outlined by that sketch plan, the plan development overlay, and other applicable town planning documents. And then finally, with respect to the lot standards being proposed, the minimum lot size within the filing is 5,927 square feet, and the maximum lot size is 17,600 square feet, with an average lot size of 8,185 square feet. All these lots meet or exceed the requirements established in the Timothanding Plan Development Overlay Amendment Number Two, which you have reviewed earlier this year. Just for some context, the R2 standards, the minimum lot size would be 6,000, so it's, it's, what they're proposing on average is actually over what that requirement is, even with the PD overlay amendment. As part of the review process, we as staff evaluated final plats using the criteria that I outlined before in the land use code. We've reviewed the proposal against the criteria, and the following summarizes our following, or findings, which were in the staff report. One, that the final plat conforms of the approved preliminary plat. Our analysis is that the final plat is in compliance with the approved Timothanding preliminary plat. It reflects a slight reduction in the total number of lots which were proposed in that preliminary plat. This is a result of a revised design to increase lot sizes throughout the filing. However, these adjustments remain consistent with the overall layout, circulation, and intent of that preliminary plat. Second, that the development must substantially comply with the town's land use code. We find that the plat is compliant with the applicable provisions of the code, specifically Article Five Development Standards and Article Six Land Subdivision. The final plat meets the standards contained in both articles, and does so in a way to support the intent and purpose of the land use code. Lastly, all applicable technical standards must be met. The submittal against the town's design criteria manual, was reviewed against the town's criteria manual, as well as the Laramie County urban area street standards. This network and utility system, including grading and drainage improvements, have been evaluated for compliance with those requirements, and staff confirms that the applicable technical standards have been satisfied. With that, the Community Development Department recommends approval of the Timothanding Filing Number Nine Final Plat to Timoth Town Council with the following conditions. One, to allow staff to work with the owner applicant to address minor non-substantive modifications prior to final signatures. Two, that the recording of the final plat shall not be granted until the Aiken lateral relocation agreement is fully executed with both parties. And lastly, that the applicant shall implement measures as applicable to protect bald eagles, migratory birds, or other active nests prior to and during the nesting season, based on the identification of a high priority area identified from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. The detailed protocols for that construction timing, including monitoring and habitat protection, shall be established and provided and approved by the town before construction begins. Ultimately, what we would be asking, and we've been in communication with the applicant team, is that a third party, either biologist or ecologist, be represented for the applicant to do surveying and observations of the site prior to any construction of when they would like to move forward, for the, for staff to evaluate where they're at with what those observations are to move forward. So that, or those are the three recommendations, or conditions that we have requested with the approval of this final plat. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant team for their presentation.
And while they're coming up, Commissioners, I'll mention that, that essentially, number three there was essentially one of our update items, which, given that we've previously incorporated this in presentations, seemed appropriate to do that. So that's, that's
Good evening.
Good evening.
My apologies. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Jeff Norberg. I'm with PCS Group, representing the development team, here to present the filing nine final plat for Timoth I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the development team. I'd also like to thank town staff for getting us to this evening tonight. What you see on the screen is the approved preliminary plat four, which was approved back in July. And on the screen, we've got the filing nine master plan graphic, filing nine highlighted We are proposing, as Chad mentioned, we are proposing 340 single-family homes with this final plat. We've worked closely with town staff to develop enhanced amenities for this plat area, including expanding the Southern Pocket Park to make more usable space. And as Chad alluded to in his presentation, the addition of Bocce Plaza area. We've also incorporated the T-Rock Trail Connection as an important connection to build sooner than later. And we've worked closely with staff on the neighborhood park that runs east, east to west across the north side of this filing. These next few renderings are of, of those amenities in the neighborhood park. They'll include an inclusive playground, turf lawn areas, a dog park area, as well as a network of trail connections to the rest of the community. In summary, we are, we're excited to be moving Timoth Lakes towards its final areas of construction. We look forward to seeing residents being able to use these parks and open spaces. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. There's an opportunity for public comment. Okay, thanks, Jeff. There's an opportunity for public comment on this. Do anybody, has anybody signed up or otherwise? Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this business item number eight A? All right, we close the public comment. Commissioners, questions for Jeff or staff?
Chad, you said that an ecologist or biologist is going to be hired before they begin construction?
Yeah, so we've spoken with the applicant team, and part of our recommendation would be that that be brought on to help do the surveying of the site, not only before construction, but throughout the development of the site. This would allow us to have a better understanding of what actually is going on with the area that was identified by CPW.
So does the town hire this person?
This would be through the development team themselves.
Other questions?
I just wanted to do a follow-up to her question. Now, if I recall right, we had talked that the building had to be X amount of feet from the nesting area that they found out there.
So that was part of the recommendation from the CPW. They do have varying standards dependent on the species of which they've identified within an area. So part of the recommendation we've received at the beginning of this final plat, the final stage, was that there was a nesting site that had shown activity within the past five years for a bald eagle, where they've attempted to nest on an adjacent property to the Tenth Landing subdivision. They do have a recommendation of buffering within that, a quarter mile for very limited use within that, and then a additional quarter mile or half mile limited to construction timing. And so ongoing discussions in understanding of the site itself, activity, and further discussions with CPW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, or what staff would be looking for moving forward prior to the construction of the site to ensure that we're working on mitigating as best possible any impacts to those sites if there are activities still shown within that area.
Tom?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I really appreciate, in the landscaping plan, the playground equipment. That looks exciting. And congratulations. That really is a great amenity, and thank you for doing that.
I appreciate that. A lot of the credit goes to staff, I gotta say. They've really done a great job of pushing that compromise.
In our last meeting, we talked a little bit about traffic. And I'm still a bit concerned about traffic, particularly during some sort of an emergency or an evacuation event where Pinedale Boulevard becomes kind of a choke point as you come out to Harmony. I'm wondering, maybe a question for staff. Was a traffic study done? Was that reviewed by engineering? Is that something that we find is now acceptable? Or is there issues related to that?
I can let Justin expand upon that, but a traffic study was done and required at this stage of the development.
Yeah, so there was a master study, and then with each development, they follow up with a compliance letter. And as far as that connection, it's more for connectivity, which again, could be fire. But as far as traffic itself, a lot of times it's more for connectivity than traffic volume per se for that connection. But a traffic study was done showing that it operates. But they do meet the Lucas connectivity standards, or in the future, that they will build, they design the road to connect to the east with a bridge in the future. And then the town has actually put that in the capital project in the future as we look at that. But as far as traffic impacts, we looked at that. It meets the traffic study. It's more of a connectivity situation.
I think where Pinedale comes together and then you go out the exit to Harmony is probably the biggest issue. And I think during school hours and whatnot, that's going to be a real traffic congestion area coming across the bridge and then heading south to Harmony. I'm grateful that that exit, though, has been planned in the city budget. I think that that helps enormously during some sort of an emergency. That's the questions that I had, Phil.
So with the open space and the turf that will be there, is there going to be a non-podable water source to water the turf?
No, we unfortunately don't have that option with Fort Collins Loveland Water District. We are working with them on some, we have been working with them on some conservation approaches, though. You know, oftentimes, since they don't have a separate non-podable option, we've been working with them for the native component, the native grass, to have that be a more temporary irrigation. So we would water for two seasons until it's established, and then we would actually physically remove the tap so that it couldn't be overwatered over time, right? So it's to prevent against overzealous HOAs in metro districts that are constantly watering and mowing these areas that are supposed to be more, you know, conservation focused.
Okay, great. And then follow on about Pinedale Boulevard. So the picture of the open space there looks like it has a road going through it. Can you kind of explain what that Pinedale and Grand Tree Boulevard intersection looks like?
Are you saying going east into the new portion of the community?
Yes. So the open space in the southeast corner there. Right, so the Grand Tree, which is not going to be completed yet, right? That's not that connection over to the Harmony Club intersection. But it looks like the road just goes right through the middle of that. So can you kind of explain what that is going to look like?
Yeah, so we have kind of like pocket park areas on both sides, more or less. So we actually, this was an addition between preliminary plat and final that we worked with staff on, to make that northern portion of the park more usable. Before, it was just basically a crusher fine trail and native. And we kind of looked at it and said, you know, why don't we, because it is bisected by that collector road, why don't we provide a little bit more usability on that north side? And we did more turf on that north side. So I kind of look at them as sort of two separate pocket parks. But there's connectivity from the north to the south portion, access to the amenities on that south portion.
Okay. So maybe, there's a question for Justin about the future plans of that. So if that became a thoroughfare, is there pedestrian protection? Like, is there going to be anything in there to, you know, you have parks on both sides with cars going in the middle. Is there any concerns there?
Yeah, I was gonna maybe defer to see if maybe Vince knows if we've got the details on that, if we do a crosswalk or anything.
Hopefully you can hear me now. We don't have any real concerns. We have crosswalk amenities, normal collector amenities for trainers in that area. So we've actually worked through that very succinctly.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's all.
Marty, the voice in the ceiling?
Yes. First, thank you for letting me join remotely. One thing I would say is just a logistical point that as you move your head, your voice is kind of going in and out. So I just mentioned it for the people listening at home. They're missing a good part of the conversation. So a couple of things, questions that I have. One, related to, you know, what a couple of the commissioners have brought up already, is the, you know, the whole plan on the nesting eagles and things. And I guess this is for staff, but if we approve this now, are we losing leverage down the road? I mean, yes, we're approving the plan and everything, but how much leverage are we losing by approving this now and hoping a plan comes together later?
Great question, Marty. So with this approval, the lots in the development as a plan would be approved, but with the condition that we would have a plan in place prior to the construction of any portion of the site to ensure that we're properly handling any mitigation measures for the area itself. So that will come with ongoing surveys and documentation to ensure, one, is this still an active site? If so, then we will have to work on a measurement plan prior to the construction of any of the development, any groundwork within the site, to get to a place where we are comfortable with the limited impacts to that site itself. So it's difficult to just put a blanket condition that they must adhere to these recommendations should there be changes in the area itself with the species that were identified. And so we want to make sure that we can continue to collaborate prior to any construction and make sure that those enforcement measures are handled at that appropriate time. This would not give them the ability to just construct at any point. We would still have to have that conversation and approval prior to that groundwork starting.
Okay. And the one thing I would say, I drive by there pretty frequently, and, you know, very often I see an eagle or eagles flying in and out of those woods. So I would be shocked if anybody come back and said, "That's not active." Other thing is a request, you know, with the open areas, especially hearing that this is going to be watered with potable water. And the more we use for that, you know, potentially we start losing the ability to add taps, you know, in future. So one suggestion is, I know we're working on the land use code now. It's not going to apply to this. But, you know, it'd just be a recommendation or suggestion to the developer that, you know, look at drought tolerant grasses, you know. You know, something besides bluegrass or fescue. You know, it's going to be better for the neighborhood in the long run and better for, you know, the town in general, that we're not wasting a bunch of water on grass.
Yeah, Commissioner Joe, absolutely great suggestion. We've actually already worked with staff on, even in the sodded areas, using blends that are more drought tolerant. We have a substantial amount of the site is native seed as well. You know, I had mentioned that it's, you know, we have this concept with the native taps that will get abandoned effectively upon establishment. So we have one permanent tap for, how many acres is this? Couple hundred acres? And basically, there's only one two-inch tap for, yeah, for the entire acreage here, which, you know, I think that speaks to just the impact that this temporary native tap concept has, where we can ultimately, in the permanent kind of established condition, you know, landscape and irrigate this much area, a very large subdivision with a single two-inch tap for the future areas that we're talking about here, filings nine and 10.
Marty, other questions?
No, it was kind of going in and out. So I didn't know he was done. But, yeah, it is one, you know, I know I, for one, would appreciate you guys looking into that because there are some that are out there now that use like 70% less than the grasses we're using now. So, and they look a lot better, in my opinion. That's all I had.
Just wanted to interject here. A lot of times, the non-bluegrass blends don't perform quite as well, especially under, you know, kids running on them, right? So what we've tried to do is really limit the amount of turf that we're irrigating by switching to native for a majority of the site.
Yeah.
But yeah, your point is well received, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, and some of those are actually made for sports fields. The drought resistant ones, they're used on professional fields.
Commissioners, anything else? I've got a couple of things. You know, I've said this before in various ways. I've been very impressed with what you've done so far and certainly have no expectation that it will be anything less as you go forward. But as I drive and ride through there, the pocket parks, the variety, the quality of each of them is a little bit different. So I look forward to this. The linear park concept, is that what you would call it, Chad? That seems interesting as well. I realize it's different, but I think you're probably doing as nice a job with that as you have with the other things. Where are you with, I know it's not pertinent, just where are you with your clubhouse, your amenities down at the south end, if I could ask, please?
Yeah, still in planning. We've actually been working with staff on an SIA amendment, which will be coming forward next Tuesday. And we've actually agreed to put certain timeframes by which the rec center will need to get built, right? So I think we have that it'll be, it'll be built with the filing nine subdivision, which is here today. We anticipate that by, you know, certainly at the latest, spring 2027 would be our anticipation as to when everything would be fully opened. Idea being, you know, a spring opening of the pool and all of that.
So this won't wait for filing 10 necessarily?
No, no, that's why we agreed that it would, the work would need to get done with filing nine to ensure that it's happening in a timely manner.
All right. Next question, perhaps Justin. The connection to Grand Tree Boulevard, do we, a lot of discussion about connectivity now. So the last discussion about this question answered was looking into whether that was even going to happen. Where is that? When is that? Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so I mean, with both subdivisions, we have to design, like a preliminary design for when these roads would be able to connect. We do have it in the capital budget as outlier years, not the five-year. What we do for the capital planning is we look at five years, whatever projects we foresee that are needed in five years. Again, this one's not traffic related. It is connectivity. There is, if you see this whole subdivision, there's a lot of other connectivity, too. But it would enhance both subdivisions in getting around in the future. So that is a reason why we would still put it in our project to look at it. But it would be at least past five years in our capital budget. But we look at that every year, depending on circumstances. And it also depends on when the subdivision actually gets built out, too. So we get a chance to look at it each year to see what the impacts are. Then we could adjust our capital plan based upon that.
Thank you. What, in terms of, we originally started on the landings. How many years ago, fellows, has it been? Jeff, how many did we start? Yeah, I thought so. I was on the commission prior to when it started. What, we are presently with this filing, we are below the number of originally anticipated units, right? You said, is that likely to continue when you get to filing 10 and complete this? Are you still anticipating at this point that you'll be below the number?
Absolutely, yeah. Chad, if you want to even flip to that overall, you know, filing 10 is going to be coming shortly behind filing nine. We've been running those processes concurrently. So we're probably only a couple months from being, you know, at council for filing 10 as well. So, yeah, that's the new lot mix there. And it is below what was always contemplated.
What, so when, if you stay on that pace, how many units will we end up with? I can't even remember what from 10 years ago. What was it?
Trying to remember from memory. Trying to remember from memory. I think at the end of it, I want to say it's 1,200.
It was around 1,200.
Seventy-nine, yep.
Yeah, I seem to remember 12, yeah. So, and then there was a point, and I thought, again, some discussion about paired homes or something, this is, we've gone back to single-family homes now.
Yes, currently, as everything is plotted within the filing and in review of the other future filings, everything is a single-family detached product at this point.
Which obviously, I presume you found the market. That's what the market wants, and that's what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. A lot, a lot of it's market-driven. You know, I think last time, I've been up here so many times, I can't remember which hearing it was, but I, I know there was some discussion about incorporating, maybe it was that duplex product, I think, I think maybe it was the PD overlay amendment, there was some discussion about, about that. Ultimately, where we landed is those, those lots in purple there, those are 45-foot wide single-family detached lots. So, you know, we, we found in our discussions with builders and, you know, just market analysis that generally there was more demand for a traditional single-family detached home. But at the same time, we wanted to add a more, you know, a little bit more diversity to the product mix, and that's where we incorporated that fourth product line in filing nine and 10 to offer that.
Commissioners, other questions, comments, landings? All right. Do you have something else, Chad?
No, I just wanted to go back real quick to the comments you had on the number of units, the sketch plan, if you recall, when we did the amendment to that, we took the total from the original and maintained that as the number of units, and the 764 was the number that we got to. What is being proposed is well under that requirement.
Very good. That's, I don't know, it's neither here nor there, but I've always interested particularly something that we've been working on for long as we have.
It's really interesting to see how it evolves over time. A decade's a long time, and there's a lot of changes that happen.
How, how much, just go quickly, how much has it evolved? How much has it changed from 10 years ago, what you envisioned?
Well, I think back then, I think the biggest change is we thought there were going to be lots even larger than 70-foot lots. Because at, at the time, and, you know, and I wasn't at Catellus 10 years ago, but, you know, I, I think there is probably more skepticism about attached product working at all. We've obviously incorporated a couple, a couple different attached products. So I'd say that's one change. And then overall density, I think there was an assumption that we'd have more 70, 80-foot lots, whereas now 70 is our largest product line. While at the same time, though, just recently, I, you know, before kind of getting to this point, I assumed everybody was going to want 50-foot lots, you know, trying to go smaller density. We've spoken with the builders, and it's, we want more 60s and 70s. So you can never really, you know, you can never predict these things.
Certainly. All right, Commissioners, with that, unless anybody else has anything else. Do I have a motion on item 8A, Timothanding, ninth filing, final plat?
I'd like to go ahead and move.
To approve, okay. Do I have a second? Okay, moved and seconded to approve Timothanding, ninth filing, final plat, all in favor, Lorenzo, you, both you and Janelle are voting, Marty is not voting. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 1-2-3-5 vote.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you, do you need me to stick around for the next agenda item?
You can if you want, certainly if this is, this is certainly high entertainment, I would not deny you the opportunity to.
This is the, sorry, is it the well protect, the, the well item?
Yes, that'll be at the end, though.
Oh, okay. Mike, good?
All right, with that, we move on to, unless we have any questions, we can always circle back to you next time around, I suppose. Item 8B, in ordinance amending the land use code. Logan?
So I'll actually take the first one, so we have.
Confused here.
No worries, Logan did put together the staff report.
Easy thing to do.
So we are proposing two updates to the land use code amendments. The first being a, an update geared towards provisions around gated communities, as you spoke to earlier. Staff is recommending the reintroduction to a provision that would prohibit gated communities in all residential development. The purpose to ensure that the connections to streets, sidewalks, pathways, trails are accessible to both vehicles and pedestrians, with exceptions only to emergency or utility access. This recommendation does come in response to the fact that our current code no longer includes a restriction on gated communities, where our previous version explicitly prohibited them. Prior to our overhaul of the land use code in 2016, there was a code section specific to this item that was not carried over with the updates. So this is an intent to better support the goals of the town's comprehensive plan, including safety, inclusivity, and well-connected neighborhoods. So to make sure that this applies to all types of residential development, not just single-family, we have proposed additions to both Article 5 and Article 6 of the land use code. So the same language will be added to sections 5, 3, 1, 2, which is related to access. This captures all residential developments, including multifamily, that could be done at site plan. And also section 6.6.1, lot layouts, which is within the subdivision criteria. So say a subdivision that we just reviewed tonight, that would be a code requirement as per that section. So just ensuring that we have that for all types of residential. And so this language would state that the established, establishment of gated communities as defined by the code is prohibited in all residential developments, and that no residential development shall include physical barriers or other controlled access that restricts vehicular or pedestrian access to streets, sidewalks, pathways, or trails within the development. Controlled access may be permitted only for emergency vehicles or utility purposes and shall not limit public access. So with that, there are instances where there are secondary accesses for emergency vehicles. Oftentimes, you will see that those are gated, so that would be an exception to the requirement as it relates to gates. And then with this, we have added the definition of a gated community so that we are able to enforce that. A residential development or portion of a residential development where vehicular or pedestrian access is restricted by gates, walls, fences, or other barriers, limiting entry to residents, invited guests, or authorized personnel. This includes areas where streets or pathways are private and controlled in a way that prevents public use. So this is the proposal that we have put forth for that update related to the gated
Let's open this up, public comment on this one first. Does anybody here wish to speak on this issue, signed up or otherwise? I figured you would. And you have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Chairman Goldstein, members of the commission, staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Greg Bamford. I am the owner and developer of the White Wing Communities, and I have this honed down to three minutes. I'll see if I can do it. In my comments, I'm approaching the subject from a general view based on 25 years of experience building and marketing custom home subdivisions in gated communities. As Scott said tonight, I am informed and understand that our White Wing land use application, as it is now pending, is not subject to this discussion and wouldn't, we still do have issues to resolve, and we're working on those, and they're in the staff hands and have been for several weeks with addressing what Chad sent to us following the postponement by the council on October 15th, contain three key points, and I won't go into those, but we have addressed those. Gates are not the predominant driving force of White Wing subdivisions. Low density is the driving force. All White Wing subdivisions are in locations designated by municipal master plans for approximately one to two units per acre. That typically leads to secondary buildings and land uses for which homeowners desire a higher level of security and privacy than production homes, which are built at a density of three to five units or more per acre. In our company, we have entitled and built five communities totaling 535 custom home building lots in the southeast Phoenix metro area. We have entitled and recorded the final plat for another subdivision in Arvada, Colorado, of 37 custom home lots, which includes gates. So all of these 572 custom home sites, which does not include the White Wing at Timoth Manor, are half to one acre in size, and all are in gated communities. We know from this significant experience that with a wide array of features that make White Wing an attractive alternative for custom home development, having the safety, privacy, and security of the gates is important. My interpretation of discussions and concerns expressed by the town council members on this subject is that they are highly focused on responsibilities they have to all Timoth residents, to safeguard and promote existing land use code and the comprehensive plan for connectivity throughout Timoth. With some study, ingenuity, and compromise, we believe there are ways to create subdivisions which can serve connectivity throughout the town, as well as at least partially provide the safety and security of gates. For example, hours of operation of the vehicular gates can be set so that they will be open during the day and closed during the dusk to dawn time period. Having no walk gates and positioning fencing to allow pedestrian and bicycles free access to all the parks and interior streets of the community can be achieved. The requirement for the subdivision itself, not the town of Timoth, to retain responsibility for maintaining the streets can be agreed upon. In short, my recommendation is not for a legislative action to eliminate gates from the future of Timoth, but instead empower the planning staff and the planning commission and the council to continue to evaluate on a case-by-case basis those situations where gates may have little or no negative impact on the provisions of code or comprehensive plan, and which can bring welcome and diverse housing opportunities to Timoth. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford.
And I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, I don't think it's really pertinent, I understand we are, we're considering Commissioners' staff is, we're considering a Timoth-wide land use code amendment regarding gated communities, not specific to White Wing. But it does beg the question, because I'm, I am somewhat confused before I open it up, is if we approve a, this amendment in anywhere near its form, does this apply to White Wing going forward?
Yeah, so as Scott mentioned earlier, because this is already in review, if there is a project in review, a code update would not be, that would not be subject to a code update. They would be held to the standards of the code in which they submitted. So this provision would not be reviewed from staff in any ongoing development of, that does conflict with this code.
So if council ultimately, and, and they have the final say on this, whether they add conditions or not to this, if council approves this as a gated community, it can go forward as such?
Correct, yes. Council has the ability to add any additional conditions they see fit based on review criteria in the comprehensive plan, so they will be evaluating it based on that, not any of the approvals today.
Is that part of it clear before you ask any other comments? I thought it was pertinent to clear that up. All right. Very good. Anybody else wish to offer public comment on this item? It would close the public comment on this land use item, Commissioners. Who would like to? Jump at once here.
I'll jump in.
Okay, put your mic on.
Yeah, I've read through this, and I'm, I've really thought about it a lot. You know, what, it's interesting, your perspective that, you know, from, from, you want to have safety and security in, in your community, you may have outbuildings and so forth. When I look at the rest of Timoth, we have outbuildings, we have the same kinds of things. So what, what's different about a gated community versus, I've got a fence around my, my backyard, and there's a gate along the side of the house? So, so the difference is, do we want gates on the roads, on the entrances, to prevent vehicles from coming in after dark or whatnot? And, and I, I have to say that I, I don't really see the need for it. I don't see that, that we're in such a high-crime area that we need to have restrictions on people walking up and down the streets or sidewalks. I, I know that we've got trails coming through your community that, that people will be riding bicycles, hiking, probably all times of the day and night. That's, that's certainly something that we, we want to encourage, but I just don't, I don't see the need for a gate on a, on a road, or some sort of an access to, to and from Bus Grove Road or, or the, the community. It's not like it's so remote that, that the police department is, is more than a few minutes away. It's not like it's, it's in a high-crime area or an area where, where you might have, you know, people up on the reservoir, you know, looking down at your valuables in a, in a shed. I, I just, I just don't see the need or why, why this would be desirable for any development in Timoth, in my opinion.
Mr. Bamford, if you're inclined to get up and, and respond to that, again, we're not here, am I correct, in looking at this way, staff? We're, we're not here evaluating White Wing, we're here evaluating an issue that is certainly, I understand, is important to you, but that's not what we're doing tonight. But I believe that opportunity will come when you, this goes before council again. I think my colleague was kind of asking rhetorically.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
Entegrate your.
No, no, I, I got it. Tom, any, any other comment?
That's my comment.
Wendy?
So this would not, if we pass this, this would not apply to anything under review that might have.
They apply to the code in which they had submitted an application.
Very good, thank you.
But maybe Chad, to expand on that, let's say a neighborhood, an existing neighborhood in, in Timoth were to say, "We'd like to put a, a gate, we'd like to put a chain across the entrance to our cul-de-sac to, to prevent issues." This, this would apply to anything in the future, should they go forward and ask for a building permit to put up a gate or a chain or.
Correct.
Or something like that. I think outside of having those little plastic things that say, "Go slow because kids are playing," we don't have anything like that anywhere else in, in Timoth, and maybe for practical reasons.
That is correct, and this will go before town council for second reading next week. And so should this pass, any application new submitted proposing something of this would be reviewed from staff. It would not be permitted within their development. Anything existing, again, would not apply.
But just to clarify that example, though, in existing neighborhood, all the existing neighborhoods would not be able to do that regardless because they're. neighborhoods would not be able to do that regardless because they're public streets and they don't have the right to block a public street, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And likewise, a neighborhood or HOA-sponsored rec center, a golf course area, you don't have gates in front of the parking lots to get in and out of those even though they are, you know, restricted to members only in some cases. They wouldn't be able to put up a new fence, new gate.
Yes, this provision is for residential development, so any proposal that would limit the access for public within the residential development, we would review that. Private centers within those, we would have to look at that, but yes, this is for the residential.
Janelle?
So this used to be a provision and then it was dropped in 2016. What's the history? Why was it dropped?
That is a great question. So Troy actually did a lot of digging to see kind of where the reasoning behind a lot of code changes that occurred from the previous to the 2016 adoption. And the staff that did provide that, the consulting team, did have a pretty extensive Excel document which stated why things were added or changed or removed. This was not discussed within that, so it could have been that this was an oversight and why that was not included or continued into that next requirement. So there was no note that we have found as to why that had been removed at the request of council or any other, anyone involved with that update.
Okay, thank you. And then what do the towns around us allow and not allow on gated communities?
That's a great question. So within the surrounding area, I found that the majority of them, if not all, I apologize, I don't have that with me tonight, I should have that, prohibited the use of the gated community. I believe Fort Collins was one of those as well, that no longer allows for that moving forward.
Okay. When I, yeah, when I did a quick search on it, I found that Fort Collins was prohibited, but Loveland does allow it and has some good, has some examples of that one. So I guess one of my concerns with this provision is that we would be in competition with basically Loveland. If someone were to come in and wanted to build a community like this, they would not consider Tinmouth at all. They would move on, move on to another town that would allow it. So my other question is, the way I read this is that, does it apply to private driveways?
A private driveway? I'm trying to think of how that would work, but I would say no if it is just a one singular lot that it is accessing it from.
Okay. Yeah, good, that last sentence, this is, includes areas where streets or pathways are private and controlled in a way that prevents public use. So, you know, there's some, there is some houses around that have, you know, very long driveways and they have a gate at the end of it to keep evidently people out of that, but, or the house at the end of Hector and Main Street, they don't want the traffic making a mistake and coming into their driveway either. So I think that was, that was another concern I had with this and that, and then with like multi, like apartment complexes, would this prevent them from gating off like their parking lot to prevent people parking in their parking lot?
It would, so it's intended for all types of residential development. So the way it's written now, yes, if a development for a multifamily had roads within their development that they were proposing to gate off, that would not be permitted with this code.
Okay.
And that's a great point that you had to the private portion, so I will look at that and make note, there are some single residences that may have that. This is more for an entire development that we're looking to exclude the ability to gate, but I will, I will fine tune that, I'll look at that to see if there's any changes that could be made to that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify something before Renzo asks questions and Marty, give Marty an opportunity as well. The, so I understand you, if there was a, an actual amendment that, whereas this was gated, communities were not prohibited, not allowed, and there would have been amendment, you would have seen that, this just appears to be, for some reason, never got carried forward. Can't find any legislative action that took it from prohibited to not addressed.
Correct, yeah, we, from what we found from the files we have, we didn't find any record of why that was not continued over.
And then to Janelle's point, and I thought, I thought this is where she was going to go, within Harmony, there is a property that has, that it's a gated access and a lengthy drive down in the lower portion off of near Mountain Shadow that has, so if, and this is a single residence, that if it had been prohibited, it would beg the question, how did that get through back then? I certainly don't remember it being addressed at all, so one would think that it was probably never, never prohibited to have a, intended that a single family dwelling, whether it's small acreage or a large acreage, is prohibited.
Yeah, and so the previous code was also geared around gated communities, and so this, that scenario is a private driveway, so that's why that would not apply to that. So the intent again is it being a community, restricting access as a whole into a community rather than a private residence.
Renzo?
One of the things I wanted to reiterate with Tom, I agree.
Mic. No, just talk on it so.
Oh, sorry.
Thousands of people at home can hear you.
One of the reasons, you know, we have a great community here is that it is a safe community and it's been proven by our stats in the police department and the need for closed-in areas, I think also eliminates the neighborly aspects of what we are trying to achieve here, especially in the rural areas. So I just wanted to reiterate, I feel the same way that Tom was saying. One of the things that you said, Chad, is you said that this didn't apply to private driveways when we were talking about if somebody in an existing neighborhood wanted to put a chain link across, they couldn't because it was a public road. The roads that are going to be in this gated community, are they public or private in the one that's being proposed? I know I'm digressing on something else, but I got to follow on to it if.
Yeah, so again, the code is not, the amendment is not in response to just one single development, this is for the community as a whole, but what was proposed were, would have been privately maintained streets.
Okay, so they wouldn't be turned over at some time to the city to maintain?
No, that is why we request there be a minimum standard so that if there ever is that case, it is meeting a standard that the town feels appropriate for that maintenance.
Thank you.
Marty? You're still there?
Yeah, I am, just had to find the mute button. Following on to what Renzo just said, it seems like this amendment is incomplete, you know, doesn't really meet the intent, I wouldn't think, because, you know, even if you prohibit gates, if this community has private streets, you know, regardless if there's a gate or not, if I go on to a private road, I'm trespassing, right? So it seems like to me, the intent of what you're wanting to do, you can't really have private roads or private streets either.
That is correct, Marty, however, I believe the intention of a private drive was stemmed from the design of the project, so oftentimes that would be developed as a public road within the development, so that would be the intent moving forward. Again, I can, I can further dive to assure that I'm capturing all sorts of developments that are creating that inclusive and well-connected area without engaging public in areas where they shouldn't be.
I guess I didn't really understand that, because it's like, if it's a private street, I can't, you know, I can't just go there. It's not public, you know, so don't you have to prohibit private streets as well?
Hi Marty, so this is Logan. So our private streets typically have public access easements over them, so the private designation is really just a maintenance issue, who's going to maintain it?
Okay.
Yeah, so leave that clarified.
Okay, that makes sense. Some of our commercial developments are private streets, right, as well? Ladera, yeah. Marty, what else? Marty?
Oh, it's just kind of related to that. I didn't know if it, you know, if it would serve to confuse things or clarify things if that was addressed in here. I'll just kind of leave that up to you, but it was the first thing I thought of when I read this is, you know, there's no gate, but I may get nabbed for trespassing anyway, but it sounds like there's an easement there. So I'll leave it to you whether, you know, that should be called out in this or not. But the other thing, I just wanted to clarify because the way we went kind of back and forth on this topic, I just want to stay, you know, understand very clearly that, because on the first reading, Councilman Holt asked a very similar, the same question, you know, it's basically this does not apply to private, you know, whether it's a, you know, regardless of the lot size, this does not apply to them, but if I have a half acre that's not part of a resident, you know, not part of a neighborhood, you know, like some of them do, I can have a gate, right?
That is correct. On a private residence, you would be able to do that within the confines of our fencing requirements.
Okay, and, and it's true that regardless of size, right? Because when Jeremy asked that question, you know, the answer, there was a reference to 35 acres, which I didn't see in the wording on this amendment, so I didn't know if that was just, you know, misspeaking on something. It was Scott or somebody, I think it was Scott, that had answered that question, and there was just a reference to 35 acres that was thrown out, but I don't see that anywhere in the documents.
Marty, that was my comment, it was just a general reference to a
Okay.
Single lot with a long driveway where there's, could be a gate. Sorry for the mischaracterization of a 35 acre lot versus a smaller sized residential driveway.
Oh, no, 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 it wasn't that, it was just, I was making sure that I didn't miss something, so, so that's good, thank you.
Let me, one other follow-up on this, while we're on this one. Would it be unlike certain other standards where the HOA or Metro, the town standards trump that or the state standards, for instance auxiliary dwelling units, would it be safe to say to the, if the HOA/Metro prohibited gates in the development, that would not be allowed? In other words, they would still trump that?
Correct, they would have to adhere to the town's code. To not.
No, what, yeah, no, what I'm asking is if they had a prohibition on, we've established.
They could be more restrictive, not less restrictive.
They could be more restrictive, okay. Well, thanks for clearing that up as well. Okay, mister's other, other questions on, Chad, you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate the feedback. The intent is not to have confusing language with these amendments, so we'll look at tightening this up to ensure that it captures multiple lots and so that it's not precluding this from a single private lot in that it is a community that the intent is that we're looking at here.
I think that would be a good idea, let Marty chime in here too. It would seem to be a good idea when it goes forward to council that, I don't know if it rises to a condition or simply adding that language that it does not prohibit private property of any size, correct? Other than as prohibited by the HOA or Metro. Marty, does that, does that sound sufficient on that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, the table has the different zonings in there, you know, that like it doesn't apply to agriculture and things, but it was just one of those things where, I guess where I was looking for clarity is because, I mean, it's not out of the realm of possibility if we annex in, you know, as we annex more properties in, that there's some of these that are in the town now that are, you know, a private piece of property of varying sizes that may have one house, two houses or whatever that have gates, so. And, you know, it's, I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that, you know, when we annex them in, they would stay agriculture, they may be RE or something like that, so.
So it would be appropriate to have that as a condition of approval, I think, if you want specific direction on that, especially because I'm a little, I think it would help clarify exactly what your intent would be, because I think we've talked about several options here in terms of what that language looks like. So when you say you don't want it to apply to private at all, you mean if they're private streets or private pathways, or do you mean if it's a single property? It'd be helpful for you to clarify what your intent is on that one.
Well, I'll take a crack at it, but what we're, the intent, at least in broad terms, this is not by way of a motion, a condition for the motion, as a motion, but the intent is any private property that is, that is in the town of Tinmouth, whether it's quarter acre or five acres or 35 acres, would not be prohibited from having a gate on that property other than if there is some restriction from the HOA homeowners association or Metro district.
And there would be some public properties, for example, the police station across the street has a big gate on their parking lot, and the high school has a number of gates around the stadium.
Excellent point.
There may be other exceptions out there that staff may want to consider.
Yeah, and again, we limited this just to residential developments, we did not include that with commercial or industrial zoning designations.
Fair enough.
So the, now putting, I saw you nodding when I was explaining what we were, where we were trying to go, now putting that into a, and I would agree, if there's, especially given the confusion over this, over the years here now, if there's an opportunity to tighten this down as it goes forward to council, I think making it a condition that the language specifies that this does not apply, does not prohibit gates on other private property regardless of size, except as prohibited by association or Metro. So is that, is that sufficient to turn into a condition on this?
I guess I would, I would maybe suggest to keep the HOA and Metro off, I don't want to embolden them.
Maybe we should let them.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need to put Metro or HOA if they had a restriction that would already apply. So if the town didn't adopt this or there wasn't a restriction on gates, an HOA or metropolitan district could still make their own restriction, so you don't have to include that piece in the motion.
All right, that's fine. All right. That's fine.
I'm a little queasy about the word private property. That's very broad terminology. We're talking about residential development. And we're really talking about a single lot, a single family resident. Definition of a gated community in my mind is pretty clear what we're talking about. So if there's any tweaking of language, you could add some language to exclude a single family. Residential lot is not a gated community.
That's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. Yeah, we, there's no intent to say that a single family lot of any size is a gated community. So however we get there, we don't care who hits the home run as long as we win the game here.
Bill, is this something we can let staff do the wordsmithing on if we give them a general approval of what we've got so far?
I'll look to the town attorney who made the suggestion that we make it a condition. So typically when you make that recommendation to us, you want us to, you want us to codify it, if you will. So I'm okay with that as long as it has the same end result.
Right. I think it's appropriate that, I think it'd be fine to let staff make the final language adjustment just to clarify your intent and then we'll help draft the motion. Your intent would be in looking at this definition, something to the effect of residential development or portion of residential development where vehicular or pedestrian access to multiple residences is restricted by gates, fences or other barriers, including limiting entry. And then adding something saying, you know, this would not include any restrictions on a single, single family lot.
The last, last part is I think all we need
That's all you need.
All we need to add to this, we, I believe the, the rest of this is sufficient. So rather than reinventing the gated wheel here, if you will, I think all we need is something that this does not apply to private residences.
Then that can be your condition. It can be that clear that this does not apply to the gate on a single family lot.
Marty, out there in Boston, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. You might think about if we ever annex the Walker property, there's multiple houses on one private lot, one driveway with a big gate. That, that may be exempted as well.
So we do also have non-conforming uses. So if something comes in that was after the establishment of a code, there are the abilities to some, to maintain some of those uses. We would have to look at that, but.
Commissioners, right and left here, everybody, we move into some conclusion on this one. Okay. Thank you. With that, are we, are we taking the amendments for voting purposes separately or are we doing this all at once? I'm not clear. Somebody straighten.
I think you would do it all as one. Now you'd move on to discussion of a second.
All right. So we move on to landscaping. Logan.
Hello. Good evening. All right, landscaping. So I first want to touch on water, specifically water in Colorado. And then I'll get into the specifics of the Senate bill, background on the bills, some definitions and applications, our proposed changes to the land use code, and then we have a few questions for you. So we live in northern Colorado, which is a semi-arid, high desert climate. And most of our landscapes here require irrigation systems. And I think there's the common sentiment that there are other really great things to do with our potable water, such as drinking, cooking, bathing, et cetera. So we want to see less of what is on the picture. So where does our water come from? In Colorado, about 83% of it comes from precipitation and the remaining 17 is groundwater. And if you didn't know, Colorado is a headwater state. So we have 158 rivers and 156 of those originate within the state and then flow outward to supply water to other states. Only two of the rivers flow into the state from elsewhere. And then we have four watersheds. So we have the Colorado, the South Platte, the Arkansas and the Rio Grande as pictured. So what's interesting is more of our water leaves the state than stays in it. So about 60% of water is consumed by downstream users in other states. And this is particularly true when we look at the Colorado River Basin. So as you can see, in the middle of the state, we have the mountain range. And so the rivers to the west, kind of the outflow you see is to the west. And then the rivers east of the mountain range flow out east. And so there was a historical agreement in 1922, 1922, where seven states divided up 5.4 trillion gallons. And that's called the Colorado River Compact. And what we've found recently is the actual average flow is four trillion gallons. And so there's a pretty big gap. So we're promising more water than we actually have to give. So this was, this contract was revised in 2023. California, Nevada and Arizona agreed to cut their water use by at least three million acre feet through the end of 2026. So that agreement will then need to be revisited again next year. So that just brings us to the point that water in Colorado is a very precious resource. And so the state has decided that it's important for our cities and towns to switch to a more water thrifty landscape. So every drought, drop counts and community efforts really add up over time. So landscapes are also a very precious resource. And this, this effort is really not to move the needle like what's pictured below to like a zero scape or rock scape scenario. We love our landscapes. They contribute to air quality. They help with stormwater management. They contribute to wildlife habitat. They lower our urban heat islands and they beautify our spaces. So how do we protect both? Well, we use water wise landscape practices. And so we plan for water efficiency. We choose appropriate plants for our area. We ensure irrigation systems are running efficiently and effectively. And then we use soil amendments and mulch. So the state has taken many actions on landscaping in the last few years. This is a list of six bills that have passed. And it kind of, they've moved from kind of encouraging to more of a heavy handed approach. So you really see the progression showing like a clear and expanding strategy on water conservation. And so we're going to be talking about the Senate Bill 24.5, which is the turf limitation for water conservation. But that bill was expanded by House Bill 25113, which will be effective in 2028. And that will apply to multifamily. So a little background on the Senate bill. It limits non-functional turf, artificial turf and invasive plant species in new developments and redevelopment projects on or after January 1st, 2026. The bill was signed into law in 2024. And the code must be updated by January 1st, 2026. And that's why we kind of had a weird sequencing with this code amendment. The goal of the bill is not to eliminate all lawns, but to remove high water use turf where it serves no practical purpose. So a few definitions. Artificial turf is the installation of synthetic materials developed to resemble natural grass. Invasive species not native to our state. It has no natural competitors or predators in our area because those are out of range. And it harms state's economy and/or environment. Non-functional turf is turf that serves no practical purpose, provides no recreational benefit for the community and it's just for looks. Some more turf definitions. Turf is continuous plant coverage consisting of grasses that when regularly mowed form a dense growth of leaf, blades and roots. Functional turf can be used for sports, recreation or community purposes such as playgrounds, stormwater measures and sports fields. And then non-functional turf again is purely decorative. And that's a picture of a little tennis soccer team I coached last spring. Applications. So the bill applies to, again, new development and redevelopment of street rights of way and medians, parking lots, transportation corridors, commercial, industrial and institutional land uses, and then common interest landscape areas. It does not apply to private residential lots. So these are, the next few slides are a little text heavy. But our proposed changes, so in terms of applicability, the bill, as just stated, applies to new construction, new development and to redevelopment. And this is stated in the bill where more than 50% of the existing landscape is being changed or when a project requires a building or landscape permit, plan check or design review. So our existing triggers for site plans and landscape reviews include enlargement of an existing structure that requires further site development, change of use that leads to further site development beyond the original approval. So we kind of have some latitude and policy room to distinguish within those categories what our triggers are. So the goal is to trigger projects that really truly constant constitute redevelopment. So meaningful building expansion or use change that adds parking, hardscape or modifies common yard areas. And therefore those areas, the affected landscape areas would need to come into compliance. So our proposed triggers include new construction, a site plan that increases the impervious area by more than 20%, the addition of parking and then the modification of a site where more than 50% of the aggregate landscape area is disturbed. So the two in bold, we cannot change. And then the, the two that are not in bold is, is what we added. In terms of artificial turf, the bill allows artificial turf on athletic fields or play of play and other applications where it is deemed functional, while allowing local governments to be more restrictive if they choose. So we chose a more protective local stance than the baseline state requirement. And we did this by banning all artificial turf and artificial plants and landscapes, not just non-artificial, non-functional artificial turf and making athletic fields a discretionary exception subject to findings rather than a broadly allowed category. And the reason behind this was research has shown that synthetic turf really blocks water infiltration. It disrupts natural hydrology. It kills trees. It sheds plastic, entire rubber pollutants into stormwater systems and the air. The material degrades here in Colorado quicker than in other places. It operates much hotter than natural gas. And so we just felt as a department that water savings kind of don't offset that environmental and health costs and that natural alternatives are preferable. Other proposed changes, we clarified the turf limitations in the code. We add a prohibited plant list section. This will be expanded upon later. And then we added definitions. So we will be doing a more comprehensive overhaul of the landscape code in the coming months. This was really just to get in compliance with state law. So the upcoming code will, will create soil amendment policies and compliance. We'll improve tree policies. So looking at tree preservation. We'll create a plant list that also aligns with the wildland urban interface requirements. We'll revisit our living plant material coverage requirement. We will further develop our native seed establishment policies and revisit our maintenance requirements. And we'll draft irrigation requirements that are designed to prioritize water conservation and water efficiency. So a few questions for you all. The first relates to the redevelopment triggers. So should our code treat, you know, compliance as required only for new development and significant redevelopment as defined in the statute, or does the commission prefer to expand that definition to include additional local thresholds? So new parking areas, a specified increase in impervious coverage or other measurable site impacts. And then the second is as it relates to artificial turf, you know, should our code maintain that more protective local standard that generally prohibits artificial turf? Or should we align with the baseline state standard which allows functional artificial turf? And that is all I have.
We're going to open this up first to public comments. Anybody here wishes to offer any public comment on this item? Very good. We'll close the public comment. Commissioners, questions, comments? Renzo?
Yeah. So you already addressed the one that I wanted. And that's the artificial turf. Personally, I don't see any issue with allowing artificial turf as functional. Or if it's used a lot in the residential areas. I see that in the commercial areas, it could be used in like a large patio area where they might do gaming or something. So to disallow it, I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice. So that's my opinion on that one. And then I'll go ahead and address number one, if I may then. I, I like the idea of being able to readdress it when, at any of the opportunities you have. So if you want to make it a little bit less restrictive in saying that it's not only new development or X amount, if you want to open up that aperture a little bit more, I'm all for it.
Next. Tom?
Yeah. Lindsay, that was great. Thank you. I like, I like what you presented. I think there's some more things that we could expand, areas to add. For example, we should consider other recycled water uses. Gray water, for example, has been promoted by City County of Denver with certain standards that Denver Water has pushed forward. I know that Loveland Fort Collins Water District doesn't really have a Reg 84 or non-potable water program, but there are ways to establish that. There are existing agricultural wells in the area that could be used as irrigation water in lieu of potable water. And there's some Reg 84 ways to do that. I, I do like the expanded definitions. I do think that there are a number of exceptions though. We should really be mindful of some of those exceptions. For example, a grass turf airfield would be an exception to this should they ever become part of Tinmouth. A company that manufactures lawn mowers and they practice on the lawn around the factory, that would be an exception, I think, to, to some of these standards. I think a future weed ordinance that we may adopt would also want to be referenced into these because a lot of natural grasses, a lot of natural turf is going to grow taller than eight inches. You're going to have a lot of wildflowers and, and some flowers that may be considered by some folks as, as noxious, but are actually beneficial for pollinators, for birds, for wildlife. We, we want to find a way to encourage some of that and discourage people from using herbicides and things that would be detrimental. We need to think about where, what other aspects of this change will affect other things within the policies that we're developing. But overall, I think you're definitely on the right track and we just need to think, is there anything else we should include?
Anell? Wendy?
Great presentation. I learned a lot here. I just need to understand number two better. So the reason why should our code maintain a more protective local standard? And that refers back to the, if you could go back a couple of slides, something about along the lines, right here. Yep. That's why we're considering, or we may want to consider. I just needed to understand that better.
You understand it? Okay. Marty?
Okay. So you answered one of them. Under 5.7.7.1.4 Under 5.7.7.1.4, there's the four points. And one thing, it sounds like point one and four are state mandates, are bolded, and those have to be in there as-is. Did I interpret that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you go back to that slide, please? Or go up to, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, just feedback, that number two and three, you know, especially two, seems pretty restrictive. You know, I kind of had the same thought that Tom did, that, you know, with Walker, you know, making them take out their lawn doesn't make sense for a lawnmower company. But it just seems like, you know, 20% is not a big addition, you know? Somebody could put in a freezer or something, you know, into their plant, and that would be 20%, and then they would have to rip up all their landscaping. It just, it just seems like this may be a bit business unfriendly, you know, especially for point two and three, that are local ones that we put in there.
Let's address, Logan, I think, wants to address that, and then go on to the next one.
Yeah, no, that's certainly a policy decision. So we would be meeting the state bill with just one and four. Two and three are really just, how do we, when sites are making improvements or modifications, how do we bring them into compliance? How do we get them to conserve more water moving forward? And so we can definitely leave those off if that's the desire.
Yeah, I don't know if there's sentiment for that. It's just my reaction was, those are pretty restrictive and may chase people away, you know, businesses away, which we don't want to do. So, but I'll let the rest kind of speak their piece on that one. The other one, the biggest thing that I had, though, was under 5.7.8.1.D., there's proposed language in what was in the packet there in RED. It says, "Bluegrass or other irrigated turf grasses with high water requirement may only be planted in areas or spaces used for recreation or civic or community purposes." And then it goes on to describe some of those purposes. And, you know, it just seems like we're missing a huge opportunity, because if we look at our open spaces, you know, there's a lot of our water, probably, you know, a significant part of the water that we use as a community is to water those spaces. And to give a blanket approval to use, you know, the high-water consumption grasses, especially like bluegrass, like I said, I think it just, it doesn't meet the intent of what we want to do, and I think we miss a big opportunity, you know, to encourage developers to use the more drought-tolerant grasses, and in doing that, educating residents that there's alternatives available that they can use. Because a lot of residents use bluegrass, because their HOAs require that, and they just don't, maybe don't know that there's alternatives, and they, I think they probably don't know, too, with these new state laws, the HOAs can't enforce some of those things anymore. So what I propose is different wording, and see if this makes sense to all of you, is instead of what I read there, wasn't read, you know, about bluegrass, what I propose is, in areas or spaces used for recreation, for civic or community purposes, low-water turf grasses such as Tohoma 31 shall be used. High-water requirement turf grasses such as bluegrass may only be used with approval of the Development Director. And then, you know, obviously, with such purposes and describing those purposes. Like I said, it's just something that if we don't take this opportunity, I think it's a simple change to really make a difference. And the thing with Tohoma 31, you know, another, that was one of the things I researched, I converted mine over to this. Colorado actually considers it zero scape. You know, so one is to change wording to that to encourage the drought-tolerant grasses, but the other question is, if there is a turf that's zero scape, does that exempt it from even industrial uses? So, you know, somebody could use a fair amount of turf in the industrial applications here if it's considered zero scape. So, sorry, two things wrapped up in the one there.
Let's first look at the triggers. First of all, Logan, you seemed inclined, may, but I want to hear what everybody else thinks. May we presume you don't, you see Marty's point in this, that this is not a, not a critical, two and three there, not a critical element, and potentially could be restrictive to business? You didn't seem disinclined to, you didn't fight very hard to keep those, so may we presume that Marty's point is well taken on those?
I can't, I can't speak to, you know, whether it's too cumbersome to businesses and would drive business out. The 20% threshold is kind of typical of what other communities require for redevelopment applications. That is a typical trigger, and the addition of parking is also a typical trigger. But certainly, we, again, would be meeting the state letter of the law with just one and four.
It would seem to me that, as long as we're doing, with this one, as long as we're doing that, at this stage, that would be sufficient.
Sure.
Because we don't, we certainly don't want to be anti-business in this regard, but commissioners.
Right, moving forward, you just want it to be capturing as many sites that are
So let me provide some context. My former employment, we had a lot of redevelopment, and most of our code compliance was trying to hit those triggers so that you're bringing code compliance up with standards, otherwise you just have a bunch of lawfully non-conforming uses that nobody meets your current code. So there's a balance act of what that threshold is and what those triggers are. So in this, we're not seeing a lot of redevelopment of sites. It's mostly greenfield development, but as Timnas matures, these are things that we'll need to consider. So, like Logan said, they're not required at the state, but it's more of a proactive way of trying to capture any redevelopment opportunities. Those numbers could be changed, but again, it's something that you typically do with a variety of redevelopment opportunities, everything from parking standards, landscaping standards, ADA compliance, architectural sign compliance, there's a lot of things that redevelopment triggers for code compliance. Otherwise, you just end up with longstanding, lawfully non-conforming uses that just change out their sign, and they keep doing the same thing over and over again. So that's just something to think about moving forward.
I'm not, I'm not weighted one way or the other to this. Commissioners, what, staying on this point, Renzo, what are your thoughts on this one?
So, question first. These triggers are just trigger so that you can get into the evaluation process. It doesn't mean that they have to make all the drastic changes.
Right, we would evaluate the site plan.
I like the 20%. And the reason why I like it is if you look at my metro district here in Trailside, if I go and want to change my landscaping more than 20%, I have to go back to the Architectural Committee and request that my plan be approved. And that's all they're saying here with this 20% is that they have to come to them, have it approved, and if they agree with it, they're fine, but it gives them the opportunity, which I like, to be able to reevaluate. Otherwise, you could still have a business, day one do 15%, day 30 do another 15%, and then aggregate, keep doing it, and never trigger anything. And that's something we want to avoid as well.
Is that really saying that? I guess I read it differently, that if any one of those four conditions exists, that you have to comply with this land use code. Not that you're evaluated, but you have to comply with it.
So for redevelopment, typically, when we would evaluate a site, it would be the impacted or affected landscape area. So it would be proportional to what is being modified. That would need to come into compliance.
To Renzo's, to Renzo's point, which I think, first part, for sure, I thought he was on, right, definitely on the right track. Are we, let's use the Walker manufacturing as an example. Would they, in fact, with their addition that I assume is still in the works, would they, in fact, have to take out all the existing grass around there? Or to Renzo's point, is that, can that be considered, and can be a waiver to some extent on that? Or is this absolute? This is a better question.
I mean, it's hard with the addition, like, we would have to see what landscaping is being impacted, what landscaping requirements exist that need to be. So like, if anything in addition, any new landscaping, it would need to come into compliance.
But I think Phil's question was, okay, so I have my building here, and this area is not being touched at all, but this area is. So we understand what you're saying, is the impacted area has to come into compliance. What about this other area that's not being?
Right, would Walker need to pull out their grass and put in native seed in that unimpacted area? I don't think so. Sorry, that's not a...
I'm glad you put it in simple terms that even I can understand, because yes, if that's the case, I believe we're reaching some commonality with Marty who raised this point in the first place, and Lorenzo did a good job of making it simple. It would seem rather punitive in that regard to make them take everything out.
So, let's say they're impacting 20%, like, they're adding a building addition, 20%, like, we would then look at maybe 20% of the landscaped area and try to bring that into compliance. So it'd be proportional to the impact or the modification.
Then that probably, Marty, is that getting to where you think it should go? And that would certainly seem like we want to put that into the language of this as well. Your thoughts on that, Marty?
Yeah, I think we need to be clear that, I guess, what it's doing. And, you know, regardless if we change something or not, I would, you know, I would be more comfortable that, you know, you can overrule me. I would be more comfortable that if we at least flag the concern to the council that, you know, would this be restrictive to business? And have them kind of put their eyes on it to see if they agree, or if they don't think it would have impact.
Some verbiage that, you just said proportional to their amount of redevelopment area, something akin to that, would seem to be, Renzo, can you, could you see that as being appropriate language?
Yep.
That seems to hit the nail on the head. And, okay. All right, Marty, to your, are we good on that? We'll just have to circle back here and have to tidy up that language. Regarding Marty's second point about the Tohoma, was it 31 or whatever, or something similar, your thoughts on that? First, and then the commissioners.
So the current, the proposed language does not preclude the use of water-wise grasses. So certainly, Tohoma 31 could be used. This is just stating that bluegrass and the water consumptive turf grasses or varieties can only be used in this specific case or scenario. I certainly agree that we can have more encouraging language. I think, Marty, I'm not sure if I understood this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you're moving to, let's not even allow bluegrass in even functional scenarios. Let's say that only Tohoma 31 and similar varieties can be used in functional situations, and then any deviations be approved by the Development Director. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, because I figured, you know, they could use those if they wanted to, but if they don't have to, they're going to go with cheaper choices that use a lot more water. So, you know, I was proposing, we make the default the drought-tolerant grasses, and the exception, you know, be the high-water usage, and, you know, I don't even know if that's acceptable to the staff to, you know, to put it back on you, or just have a, use drought-tolerant grasses. And not allow the exceptions. I could go either way on that. But the main point is, make the default that you'll use the drought-tolerant grasses.
Sure. You know, in listening to the Timnas Lakes presentation, the applicant who's a landscape architect did talk about the performance qualities of some of these hybrid or different grass types. So, you know, I don't know if we've done research in terms of like performance for high-activity areas, and if that's something we need to look into, if this is the desire of the commission. And maybe Lindsay can speak to this. Lindsay's kind of our landscape expert, so.
Really put you on the spot there, didn't she?
She did. I don't know that I can speak very confidently to this specific topic without doing more research. I do believe that there are options such as Tohoma 31 that can offer a comparable performance, but without having seen that in action in Timnas, I can't provide a confident answer at this time. Sorry, Logan.
And obviously, I think you'd have to do your own research, but in mine, I'm cheap, so I don't spend money very easily, so I did a lot of research. And I found, like, that one specifically is used in a lot of professional and college sports fields, but in golf courses as well. So, anyway, it was just, you know, like I said, I just, I'm uncomfortable having a blanket approval for high-water usage areas that are some of the biggest areas taking water.
You know, we're going to move into the list you cited of the various additional land use code things that are going to speak to water usage. This is going to be some of the most complicated things. This whole subject is obviously very complicated. I'm reading a book right now that's very interesting. It speaks in great extent about conservation and such. It seems like it'd be a good idea to set the stage for what comes with anything that we can confidently add. Now, the caveat to that is if we do- Now, the caveat to that is if we do need to do more research on something like that, then we should, which means we advance this without that. But I think it behooves us to set the stage for everything that comes next. This will be interesting and complicated topics for us, for council, for the public. So, your thoughts on that?
So, one thing I do like is that if you were to go to with Marty's preferred language, he does allow for that exemption. So if an applicant really feels like they need a specific, like, bluegrass, you know, they can make that case with Scott. So, it does leave that ability, that opening, so...
That's good. An opening is good. Commissioners, are we on the right track here? Tom? Renzo? Everybody? So, Carolyn, we need Marty to put that into condition?
So, I do have, I'm taking notes, I'll be able to repeat your conditions back to you. But for the last one, I want to note that what is being proposed is more restrictive than what you have right now. So the code currently provides bluegrass may be used in active, high-traffic areas. And then what, if you went with the language that's recommended by staff, you are already restricting it further. And then staff has said that they're going to come back to you with more presentations on other water efficiency requirements. So that would allow staff the time to research that. So I would say we have to pass something to get in compliance with the state statute. So what you're proposing is not expanding it past what's being allowed right now. So in terms of having a concern that bluegrass could be used, it's actually narrowing what is being allowed right now.
Is it, in fact, narrowing it?
Yes, you would not be able to use high-water-use turf in functional areas.
Okay, back to Boston. What...
I guess, if I understand what you're saying correctly, though, in theory, yes, it's more restrictive, but in practice, you know, communities are already using native grass because it's cheap and they don't have to maintain it. You know, so I don't think there's, you know, where there are using, like, a bluegrass, bluegrass or a fescue, you know, it's pretty extensive areas, you know, in these pocket parks and everything like that. So all of that would still be considered functional, or, you know, meet the definition to be able to use the high-water ones. So, I guess, I understand we're going to be probably refining this down the road, but I just think we're missing a huge opportunity to make a difference now if we give a blanket approval for high-water-use grasses.
Well, I'm, given how soon we're going to be coming forward with more on this, are we, in fact, our colleagues' point, are we, in fact, losing an opportunity that we don't regain sooner than later?
Well, as opposed to me giving my thoughts, I mean, do other commissioners want to weigh in on Marty's preferred language?
I'd like to hear it again.
Yeah.
Okay, so, in areas or spaces used for recreation, for civic, or community purposes, low-water usage turf grasses, such as Tahoma thirty-one, shall be used. High-water requirement turf grasses, such as bluegrass, may only be used with approval of the development director. And then such purposes may include playgrounds, sports fields, or other athletic programming, picnic grounds, amphitheaters. That stays the same as what was above that last piece.
I like that, where you're leaving the door open. Certainly, it's not town attorney. Given that the door is open to approve it, are we, in fact, it doesn't appear to me that we're narrowing it. It appears that we're expanding it.
No, I think that the proposed change that Marty's proposing would narrow the allowed use of bluegrass, because it would require the town planner to approve the use of bluegrass. Now, he does have discretion, but they're going to probably have to come up with a good reason why the development is asking for bluegrass, once the language is proposed that way. So I think it is a narrowing of the use of bluegrass.
Okay, well, that's, yeah...
That's okay, if that's your...
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we wanted. I, yeah, when you, narrowing, to me, initially construed as, we are not making it more restrictive, we're actually making it more restrictive with a provision that it can be approved.
You are making it more restrictive, but there is an exception.
Yes.
It's more prescriptive, too.
Right, but we, exactly. What we've, what we're doing is we're telling them that they have to use this specific grass, and is that the right answer? And I think that's what Logan was saying, that they still had to do some research on that to say whether or not that was the right answer. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I don't think we've done the research to know, you know, how it holds up in areas of high activity and...
So let me ask, how quickly, could you do definitive research on this?
Or, let me propose something. If Tahoma thirty-one bothers people that you don't want to put a recommendation on there yet, make that part of the refinements. But we still have the language saying, you know, drought-tolerant grasses shall be used. You know, I guess what bothers me is, we've all seen neighboring communities that can't build, you know, their housing, the number of houses are kind of metered, just because you can't get the taps. And, you know, what we approved in the first business item is, you know, neighborhood with large areas that are going to be using potable water, that are going to take up taps. And maybe we're in the same situation of can't build any more houses for a while until we get more taps.
Okay, so yes, we could, your condition of approval could be to add the language that Marty recommended, except we leave out the words "Tahoma thirty-one," and you could leave it as low-water grasses. Or you could say drought-tolerant grasses, if you prefer. Do you have, does staff have a recommendation of those two?
Well, yes, sorry. It seems like in a lot of the communities, they're very specific with the words they're choosing, and I think water-wise is the term that's being used a lot lately. So we can figure out what is appropriate, but keep it in the spirit of what Marty is wanting.
Sounds satisfactory to me. Renzo, you guys, everybody? Thanks, Carolyn. Marty? You agree?
Yeah.
And there's nothing, nothing we can't modify as we go along here, based on research, based on, this is going to be an interesting process here. How soon do, how soon do you think you'll be bringing any of these other land use code dealing with conservation? Not holding you to it, but just...
Okay, don't hold me to it. March.
Great. All right, be here before you know it. All right, do we have sufficient modified language to, we do? Good, I've seen the attorney thing, yes.
Yes, and then the only, sorry, not to belabor this, but the artificial turf, there's...
This is, this is the state mandate, or this is simply town?
So, as it appears before you, it's more restrictive than the state, so it kind of prohibits artificial turf with an exception from the community development director. The state would just allow artificial turf for functional areas, so...
You, where you have research has shown, this is, is this admittedly, we just mentioned, we got to do more research on the low-water usage turf in athletic fields, for instance. Is this more empirical, if you will?
Of this, research comes from CSU professors.
Who have a, an ag school that has artificial turf on their football field? Thank you. Yes, I was working there when we, when we had that, including at the old stadium. Okay, I just had to, I was waiting for years to bring that up. So, all right, commissioners, your thoughts on artificial turf? Anybody? Danielle?
Okay with the words that she's got.
Yeah, me too. Make artificial turf the exception, rather than allowed in certain areas.
I don't see the exception part in there. Can somebody explain where that's at? Because I think artificial turf should still be allowed. I didn't see where the exception, because the part I'm saying is no artificial turf or artificial plants may be included in any landscaping, landscape plan or installed, so that's pretty explicit.
Oh, so the exception is if the community development determines the use is appropriate.
Thank you for pointing that out. I guess I stopped.
Okay. You stand corrected?
I stand corrected.
Okay.
As long as there's an "out." And, you know, like, I gave you my example, if I have a, like, a bar area or something like that, and I have an outdoor patio, you know, that makes sense for a play area.
Right, and this wouldn't, that's a residential, single-family, like, this one, not...
No, I'm sorry, that's...
For a commercial.
That's for a commercial, where they have an outdoor patio, you know, and they have games and stuff like that.
Perfect example is Pedro's, very good use of artificial turf, which allows multi-use, whereas grass would not. Okay, so Marty, any thoughts on this one? Looks like we're moving this one along, too.
No, nothing, nothing really further, because I had some of the same concerns at first, that thought artificial turf may be a responsible thing, but I guess I didn't know some of the things that Logan had pointed out.
So, this is, commissioners, this one, are we hearing, this doesn't need any modification conditional or otherwise? All right. Anything else landscaping? Some good work. Looking forward to more of this, more of landscaping issues down the road here. Okay, commissioners, there's nothing else on this? On, we're looking for a motion, including the conditions as previously stated? Yes?
Let me restate them.
Okay.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve, to recommend approval of the land use code amendments with three conditions of approval. First, that the restriction on gated communities does not apply to a fence or gate enclosing only one residential lot. Two, in section five-point-seven, point-seven, point-one, point-eight, A, two, and three, turf requirements shall be applied in proportion to the modification. And in section five-point-seven, point-eight, point-one, point-D, there'll be a modification to allow for water-wise turf, but require community development director approval for installation of bluegrass. Or other high-water grass.
Or other high water, yes.
Or other high-water grass.
Yes. Commissioners?
I'm okay with that, so moved.
Okay. We've got a motion, I have a second, but moved and seconded, to approve with the amendments, the conditions as stated by the town attorney, in ordinance amending the land use code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is on a five-oh vote. Thank you all. Good job, good work. Okay, moving on, I don't know if we'll have any reports. Scott, let's move on and do nine-A, and then we'll come back to reports.
Want me to start with nine-A? I, that's my fault, I put this under reports, and I think you added the other things earlier in the agenda.
That's okay, we're making progress, again, Bear's saying, appreciate.
In my mind, report, this is report, and happy to report on that.
Okay, well, let's, yeah, if you would, so we're moving on to nine-A, Old Town Wells mitigation update.
Yeah, so, wanted to provide a status report on the well mitigation plan. The developer hired a consultant, they investigated and went and did inspections the summer in June twenty-twenty-five. They evaluated the wells on five categories, that they're in good condition, that no further work is needed. The well is either inactive or inaccessible for measurement, so no further work was recommended. No data was provided consistent with the registration form. Well needs to be redrilled, or well was redrilled by the homeowner, so no further work was recommended, or water level decline, redrill, or the well is recommended for modification. So with that assessment, they found that four wells are in good condition. There are six wells that were inactive or inaccessible. One well was not qualified, they didn't register, it wasn't actually a well as part of the program. One homeowner redrilled their own well on their own, so it's kind of not applicable. And then they have found that there are eight wells currently eligible to be redrilled, so they are working with those individual property owners, find the right location, and go through the steps to do that, so that this contractor is still in coordination with those residents and working on those wells.
Tom, you had been in on this discussion. Marty up there, too, any questions for Scott on what's been done?
None for me, thanks.
What's that? Marty, any, I didn't hear?
Nothing from me.
Okay, well, I appreciate you continuing to look, appreciate the efforts in the, where does Mr. Elliott's, his, where does he fit in the gentleman that came to a couple council meetings? Seems to be the one who's been the most vocal about this. Where does he fit within those categories of...
He's eligible for a redrill.
Okay, commissioners, good, thank you. Going back to, is there anything else to my statement, even though we've been at it a while, about as we evolve on this update section? Anybody, anybody want to revisit briefly, hopefully, any of the other updates?
You know, Phil, we took on the one that we did earlier with the lakes, there were a couple things that still have to be completed, and there looked like there was one, at least in my mind, looked significant with that agreement being signed. They wouldn't allow it to be moving forward until that agreement was signed.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Can we just get an update?
Yes.
When it is signed?
Yeah, what, I, thank you for bringing it up, because I meant, I made a note and didn't look back at it. What... What, how, is that a slippery slope at all? How, how does that proceed? How does it not proceed? Is there any wrinkles in that?
It sounds like they're making progress on that. We did receive a comment from the applicant or the easement owner stating they were comfortable with moving this forward, understanding that condition, so they are close to working through that and executing the agreement itself. So it does not sound like there's any holdups or issues from either party on that.
Good, thank, Renzo, thanks for reminding us about that. Okay, I have nothing else necessarily to report, other than the holiday festival this weekend, as a reminder, was it noon to 2:00 or something, I believe? And, if there's anything else for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you all.